Carter Orner, Village of Hazelcrest Regular Board Meeting at 7:21. Trustee Ramsey, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Grant.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Riaz.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Slaton.
Here.
Allsberry.
Here. We have a prayer by Pastor Alexander.
Good evening.
Good evening. Let's record it.
It's okay. All right, let us pray. Father, we come to you today to thank you, Lord, for your goodness, your mercy, and your ever-loving kindness towards us. We thank you for this day, Lord God, and everything that this day entails, oh God, and holds for us. We thank you for this meeting tonight. We thank you for those who are in attendance and for those who are given the authority, Lord God, to do what is good for your people in this community. Lord, we thank you for a liberal outpouring of your wisdom, Lord God, for you said that we could get wisdom, Lord, and seek wisdom, for it's the principal thing, and in all our getting, we get an understanding. So I thank you for unity of mind, unity of spirit for this meeting, Lord God, and a liberal outpouring of your wisdom. Thank you, Lord, for unity, for one accord, Lord God, that there be no division, no strife. And I thank you that even now, as they commit their works unto you, their thoughts will be established. Thank you for the strategies, Lord God, for taking this village into the place that you called them to be, Lord God, for glorifying you and expanding your kingdom here on the earth. These things we thank you for and ask you for in your son's name. Amen. And amen.
Okay. Any consideration for possible action for remote participation in the meeting? Any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Reports, the mayor's report. First, I wanted to thank everyone who came out for the Flag Day celebrations this past week. Flags Day was a great event. I'll thank trustee Ramsey in my absence for actually speaking at the event. The Veterans Association did a wonderful job in a really motivating speech. I thank you trustee for outstanding. I want to thank everyone who participated in the driving to Dixie. They had a record number of cars. There's over 200 cars came through Hazelcrest, which is more than we've had I can remember. We also honored former trustee Wakefield. We had to run out there and honor her because she was the catalyst behind the Hazelcrest portion of driving to Dixie since they've had it. And the family was there. They were very excited and thankful for us honoring her. And again, the drive to Dixie was a wonderful event. It also was to kick off President's Bridge Program. I want to thank Irma Holloway and the organization that's promoting President Bridge Program this year for giving hot dogs out to the participants and also registering the kids for the program. She'll speak a little bit about that later, but I think we have a record number of youth involved in the bridge program this year. So that's a great thing that's happened. We also want to thank Sandra Vickers was honored by H. Optionist, outstanding volunteer. We know that already. We're honored to have her here in the village and actually providing the services she does here because as all of us know, Sandra Vickers is everywhere. And I want to thank her for all the support for our seniors and just overall in the community, the things that she's done great. Those of you see this wonderful trophy sitting next to me, this is mine. No, I'm sorry. This award was presented by the Illinois State Crime Commission and Police Athletic League to our very own police chief, Chief Mitchell Davis, as he's been honored as Police Chief of the Year. We're going to present this to him again. This is outstanding with the trophy. I told him I would hold it for him. Thank you, Chief Mitchell Davis, as Police Chief over here. Wonderful job. Great to have him to go to Hazelcrest. And at this time, I want him to say a few words, okay?
I just thank God. I just thank God for the opportunity to be able to serve in the capacity that I have here in Hazelcrest. I truly do thank the mayor and the board for allowing me to participate in the things that I do participate in. And it's not about me, it's about serving the community, serving Hazelcrest, or representing Hazelcrest proud. So it's an honor. You know, I'm representing Hazelcrest. So you know, once again, I thank you all. I thank the citizens for being so supportive of me, and we're going to continue to move forward. So thank you all.
And we do have a booklet here that has a great picture of him and of the other recipients. They honor some mayors and other individuals from the state of Illinois. So we'll have this for you guys to peruse throughout your leisure. Also, it was end of baseball season for the Village of Hazelcrest, and I threw the first pitch out, first and last pitch out this past weekend and the weekend before last. And you know, about 90 miles, 92 miles an hour. It went to the parking lot, but it was 90, 92 miles an hour. So I thank everyone for supporting. Thankfully, guys out there and the guy who caught the ball once he found it.
Is that why you still use bio-freeze?
Yes, he still uses bio-freeze. So it was a great event. And that is my report, manager's report.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you very much. Just going to give a few little highlights of some activities moving forward in the village. One of them is that I met with First Midwest to address some of our transitional needs relating to our baking. I also met with M.E. Simpson and kind of discussed, and thank you to Assistant Village Manager with that as well, discuss some of our water services that they provide, as well as some kind of succession planning and professional development for some of our public work staff interested in water certification. In addition, I met with Robinson Engineering to start the pre-bidding process for our street resurfacing projects. In addition, I had the pleasure of being with the, meeting with the Stonebridge Home Owners Association this past Saturday. It actually went easy on me, so thank you. Also met with our website developer to discuss the redesign of our village site. So we're in the process of that moving forward. So thank you, Ms. Carolyn, as well. In addition, I met with our employment attorney, Ms. Violet Clark, so thank you, Ms. Quinn, for setting that up. And most importantly, I had the opportunity to attend the Illinois event honoring our police chief. So thank you very much with that, and that's all I'll share for today.
Thank you. All right, no legal?
No.
Police.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things we got coming up, just kind of keep your eyes out. We are going to be advertising for testing of new officers, officers that need to go into the police academy. We exhausted our last list, and we need to have another list. So within the next month, we will be having testing for people who are not, actually anybody can test, but for those who have not been to the police academy, that will be able to test also. Our next big event after the Fourth of July, which Carolyn will talk about, is National Night Out. National Night Out Against Crime is on Tuesday, August the 7th. It's going to be over in the proper area. And for those of you who don't know, Officer Clifford Winters is retired, and Officer Robert Milligan has taken his place as our community policing officer. So Officer Milligan stepped in. He left everything in order for him, and he will be transitioning for the National Night Out. And so that's our big event. One last thing, just a reminder to the citizens that on July 31st, St. James Hospital will be closed. So the impact that it's going to have on folks that go to South Suburban Hospital, just the numbers are that South Suburban is equipped, they were supposedly equipped to handle 33,000 ER patients every year. They currently handle 45,000 ER patients every year. And with the closing of St. James, it is anticipated it will jump to 60,000 a year. So that's going to, for first responders, that's going to have an impact on us, more so the fire chief, but also for us also. But the reason I bring it up to the citizens is that if you thought you had the way long in the emergency room before, so what they're saying is that they're trying to make sure that people take advantage of urgent care centers. They're trying to, just so as a public service announcement, I'm just giving you all a heads up that if you can, go to an urgent care because there's going to be some long waits, and it's going to be in every hospital in the South Suburbs and in northwest Indiana. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works.
Thank you, President, trustees, fellow directors, and residents of Hazelcrest. We recently brought in two new seasonal employees that started this Monday. Also, we recently completed a dig over at the MyJack facility. I'd like to thank MyJack for their assistance in completing that dig. They had some heavy equipment, which they was able to, you know, move out of the way, which allowed us to dig up one of the fire hydrants over there and replace a leaky valve. We continue to try to set priorities with our public works team, including looking at systems that we can use to help make our work more efficient and communicate better. Set up a meeting with cardiograph, who helps us track our service requests, so looking at developing new processes for that. Recently signed up to join the Small Utilities Association for the American, excuse me, Water Works Association. These memberships allow us to gain access to training, as well as be made aware of different legislative policy that can impact our water delivery systems. In addition, last week, I attended my first other, excuse me, my first ever South Suburban Water Works Association meeting, where I had opportunity to hear from, I believe it was Drexel Engineering. They provide maintenance on various motors and components that work in our infrastructure. And earlier today, I attended a meeting for the American Public Work Association, where I got a chance to hear from two state legislators on funding and transportation of infrastructure projects. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Human Resources. No, sorry. Inspection Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I have a few announcements. I gave the board a list of all the activities for the Inspection Service Department. I want to give the village board an update. The activities considered are a number of tickets issued, service requests, mornings issued, new businesses to the Village of Hazelcrest, and business coming to the village. It covers the months of May and June to today's date. Also, I think last village board meeting, we talked about the advocate South Hospital relocation of the utility package. We did an expedited plan review, so that plan review is completed. We met with Powell's Construction, discussed any questions they had. So we anticipate the re-inspection to start sometime next week. The second review should go quickly. Friday, we're going to attend the Abilities Expo to stay abreast of new techniques of disability issues. Some of the issues going to be covered are access to public right-of-way accessible homes and accessible business. So that's going to be great for staying abreast of new techniques and the code. Also, our Inspection Service Department staff members will attend the IBC Special Training Conference Day on the 12th. Some of the topics going to be covered in the seminar are area refuge, exit ways, and building construction types. This helps the inspector stay current on national codes. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. President, board, Mr. Manager, Mr. Manager, Directors. Just a couple of things. Thank you, board, for allowing me to attend the Society for Human Resources Management Annual Convention, which was actually held here in Chicago at McCormick Place. I got the opportunity to actually attend all five regular conference days, and I also had the opportunity to present at a pre-conference workshop the weekend before, which went very well. So thank you very much. I do have a lot of things that I did bring back to share with respect to the different sessions that I attended and then those presentations that are made available to me as a member. I've worked with, as Mr. Sawyer mentioned, I worked with Mr. Sawyer with hiring the seasonal workers that actually, two of them started on Monday. We did expect one to start last week. That kind of fell through the cracks, so he's actually looking to add at least one more. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, wonderful. I also worked with Carolyn. She set up actually interviews for the summer youth program, the summer help with the local businesses. So I got the opportunity to actually sit with Sabrina Gaston and also Paul, who whose mom actually owns Angelica's Bakery. So I actually met the young people over there. We actually went through group interviews with each one of them. So each vendor, including Curtis Monday, he didn't get a chance to participate, but he will reap the benefits of some of the youth. So they'll have a good time, I think, this summer, over the next few weeks, working for those particular businesses. That was a lot of fun. And that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We only got one announcement. In an attempt to keep our fire department staff up to full staff, and we had one firefighter leave, go to another community, and his replacement was hired and started yesterday. So we'll be having, in the near future, we'll be having another one in. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, can I mention one more thing? Please forgive me. I don't know if Carolyn was intending to mention it, but we are selling discounted tickets once again in conjunction with the concerts that will take place in Country Club Hills. So the fiscal clerks actually are going to sell those again this season, so just so everybody knows.
Sounds good. Community and Business Relations.
Thank you, President, and good evening, everyone. I would like to also send a special thank you to the Banking Commission for a very, very outstanding Flag Day ceremony. If you had never attended their ceremony, I encourage everyone to put that on their list for next year. Very touching and it's very spiritual. So I do encourage everyone to keep that in mind for next year. They did a very outstanding job. And as the mayor mentioned, driving to Dixie, we were so excited with seeing all the antique cars, all the people, and they were stopping, and they were excited about seeing the family center, how nice the family center is done. So that was a very, very Hazelcrest proud day. And Irma, I encourage you in for supplying refreshments. She was attending for the bridge program, so we jumped on board with driving to Dixie. We had enough of all, so thank you again. I want to make sure everybody knows that the village, in conjunction with Park District, is doing fireworks on the Fourth of July. We actually doing our fireworks display on the Fourth. In the past, I know some, a lot of the areas threw it the weekend before, but we are doing it on the Fourth of July at the Park District grounds. Also, on July 14th, the Beautification Commission is doing a summer tour, where they're going around and judging the beautification of your home. This year, we're just doing platinum, gold, and silver. We'll get the yard signs, and the bronze will get certificates. So that judgment is judging is on July 14th. And also, just keep in mind, Hazel Nut is a three-day event this year, and Community Relations have been working extremely hard, making it to be very successful this year. So please keep that in mind for August 3rd, 4th, and 5th. That ends my report.
Who's your entertainment for Hazel Nut Fest?
True. And Nikki Howell.
Yeah.
Those are just the headliners.
Okay.
So we have some outstanding entertainers Friday night. Hazelcrest has talent. JD has been working hard with interviewing and getting talent of Hazelcrest, and it's a very fun night. Sunday, we have the Gospel Fest, and it is, it's going to be just fantastic. So the entire weekend is fun and packed.
Okay. And we're also having Candy Queen and the famous Chicken Wing cook-off.
Candy Queen, crowning, Chicken Wing cook-off, 3-on-3 basketball, games from the Park District. It's a lot going on. Carnivals, ponies.
What about the walk, walk-run? Are we doing that this year?
Not the walk and run. We are doing a parade though. And we, oh, we have bikes donated already. Brand-new bikes donated. So as you go through the parade route, we're handing out tickets, a rappel ticket, to all the youth through the parade route. And at the Hazel Nut Festival, they're full tickets, and a lot, several children will receive brand bikes.
So remember, we're giving parade route, down the parade route, we're giving tickets to the youth. To the youth along the parade route, all right?
Exactly.
No uncles, aunts, moms, and dads to the youth.
Brand-new bikes.
Brand-new bikes.
No logo label. Thank you.
Okay. And Economic Development.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all assembled. As it relates to economic development, we are halfway through our year 2018. It has went so fast, it seems. But I want you to know that we have entertained and interviewed over 20 potential new business owners as it relates to their inquiries about coming into Hazelcrest to do business. Now, some of them have not met the criterias that we need, but we have many that have done so. And to date, we have 14 new businesses that have came since January 1st, 2018. We have seven brick-and-mortar, and then we have seven home-based businesses. And we have many others that are coming within the next several months, so you'll see a big change within our community very soon, as you already see some of it already. But we want you to know that we are currently continuing to explore those that come to the village. Earlier during the executive session, you had talked to administrative section, session, one of the trustees had talked about the former Wax facility. Now, we have a number of properties that we are working with the land bank to acquire those properties, and that happens to be one of those. And on the properties that we're working with them to acquire, we do have in-buyers already. In fact, the person that's our in-buyer for that particular property is in the audience today. So even though he's not there yet, he's keeping tabs on the process and progress of that particular project. So we want you to know that we are moving forward with Quas Brew House as they get ready to come into Hazelcrest once we acquire that property. So we're, that's right there on 183rd Street. So we just want you to be mindful of that. So before we start giving them away to other people, although all of those properties are actually spoken for. And so as we get ready to roll them out, we already have people in place. But to date, we've interviewed over 20 different businesses, and we have several others that are just waiting to be interviewed as we move forward, okay? Also, as it relates to the President's Bridge Program, which is underway, it began on the 18th of June. Our orientation was on the 16th. It was a great day. We had a great turnout. Trustee Ramsey, trustee Rogers both attended the orientation on that day. And we had a lot of parents that came out with good questions. They were excited about it. Their children were excited about it. And to date, we have 32 children that are participating in this year's program. Feel free to stop by over at the Family Center off of 170th and Dixie Highway any day, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 o'clock p.m. They have been instructed, of course, we don't let just anybody in, but any village employee or anyone that has proper credentials are welcome to stop by and just check out, check it out and see what's going on. This year's curriculum is focused on life skills, and so we're talking about social and emotional learning, just making sure that our children are prepared as they move forward. Accountability, responsibility, interviewing, etiquette, the whole nine yards. So they are engaged, they're excited, they're having a great time already. They're there on time, you know, so our people are getting there at 8:30 because they're there way before 9:00 now. But it's a great day. The village president stopped by today as they were exiting, and as you look down 170th Street, all you saw was gold t-shirts going down the street. So it's really a great day in Hazelcrest. We are certainly Hazelcrest proud, and thanks again for the opportunity.
Okay, one question. I'd just like to get another, for you to expound on the hotel, I mean, the restaurant right there, you said it was?
Quas Brew House. Quas Brew Pub.
Brew Pub and Dining.
Brew Pub and Dining. French cuisine, beers that we have, you call yourself a craftsman or what do you? A craftsman, okay, right? So he's brewing his own beer. You might want to come out, come up for a second or two, but he's brewing his own beer. He's been doing this for a while. He formerly worked for...
I'll go for it.
Okay, go for it.
Just to clarify the location?
Yep. 183rd, former Wax.
Wax.
Former Denny's, you know, all that, right there on 183rd Street.
Great, great, great location. Good evening, all.
Good evening.
My name is Wardell Glass, and I am Quas Brewery, or you'll come to know as Quas Brew Pub and Dining Club. So you ask yourself, what's in the name? Quas actually stands for cabas, which means beer. And we plan to come to Hazelcrest with a neighborhood brew pub and dining club to, one, revitalize the strip mall, as well as to put people to work. And I look forward to continue to work with you and visit as we get closer to that becoming a reality.
One question. Will you be brewing IPAs and stuff like that?
Off the top of my head, the brand, the brand mix is going to be spirit-infused ales, IPAs, Belgian ales.
Okay.
And lagers and pilsners.
Okay, great. All right.
Shandies?
Pardon?
No shandy? Shandy?
You mean a rambler?
Talk to me.
We have our own brew pub experts up here. Thank you so much.
Right. So the Village of Hazelcrest is ever-changing as it relates to economic development, and we're excited about that. One final remark as it relates to the bridge program. Trustee Slaton is sponsoring a day bowling for our youth. So that's going to be incorporated this year. So we appreciate that. So any of you that want to get involved, we welcome you to do so. Again, it's a lot of fun. Out of everything that I do, I have to say that the bridge program has been one of the most rewarding experiences out of my entire career. So it's a great chance to change one child at a time.
Thank you. So we've had, we've had the bridge program since 2013. We kicked off the bridge program initially with a small grant from MyJack. Since that time, we've really self-funded the President Bridge Program. Any donations or support that individuals want to provide is great, like a day out or a laser day. These funds come directly from the village, and we feel we give these back to the youth. The idea is to prepare them not only for school, but for life. We initially, when they first started going to the program, we didn't get them any kids because we was giving them math, science, English, life skills. They really did not want to go, but then we, they realized we were giving them $25 a week, and for a sixth and seventh grader, that was a lot of dough. And so over the years, it has grown, even though we self-support it. But the, now the youth know that even though they have to do all these continued school things, as they say, they also have money to put in their pocket, and they're actually learning. One thing that is exciting, exciting the first time we did this program was that they took the kids down to the Museum of Science and Industry via Metro. And you'd be surprised how many youth have never been on the Metro train before, and because they drive everywhere. Parents drive them everywhere in the suburbs. And so that was a phenomenal event. They actually were able to bond with each other. And to this day, a lot of those first timers through the bridge program are friends to this day. They all have done well in high school. We do a pre- and post-testing to all the youth. And Irma, God bless her, she follows these kids from the time they leave the program to the time they are out of high school now, which has been since 2013. And I always like to give credit where credit is due. This program was just a brainchild, not of mine, but of Larry Hawkins, who used to be at University of Chicago, used to run the program out of University of Chicago. He used to take any city kids to the University of Chicago. We call it the program. He coached basketball at Carver High School, so we got first dibs on a lot of the jobs. Alexander know what I'm talking about out there. And we used to work for the NYC, CYC program. They took us to the, to the University of Chicago. In the morning, you actually did your sport, but it was track football. In the afternoon, you actually took classes. And so I mirrored their program, and they paid us, which for any city kids who didn't have much, that little hundred-some dollars a week was a lot of money. And so I mirrored their program, wanted to get down to the young folks now. It was not just high school, but getting kids that's sixth and seventh grade, when they actually began to develop their personalities and actually begin to follow good things or bad things, what we put in front of them. So we're hoping that this program actually continues to grow. It's done a great job for people like myself, Michael Studley, Terry Cummings, and others who went through their programs as young folk. And we're hoping Hazelcrest does the same thing. And she talked about the gold search going down the street. Off-street, they all wear gold shirts. And it was great to go through Hazelcrest proper and see 20 kids walking home from the program with their gold shirts on. That does a lot for the community because people actually see these young folks being involved. So thanks for the great job. Thanks for your financial support out through the program, because the money that we get through the village and we allocate does not totally fund the program. I have to say, Mr. Irma Holloway provides support outside of the village, so thank you so very much. Irma Holloway, uh, provides support outside of the village, so thank you so very much. Can I get a motion to open for public participation for items on the agenda?
A move that we open for public participation for items on the agenda only.
Second.
A move by Trustee Ramsey, a second by Trustee Grant, to open for public participation for items on the agenda. All's in favor?
Aye.
At this time, if anything on the agenda that you wish to address, this is the time to come forward and speak for at least three minutes. Okay? Can I get a motion to close public participation for items on the agenda?
Move that we close public participations for items on the agenda only.
Second.
A move by Trustee Ramsey, a second by Trustee Grant, to close public participations for items on the agenda only. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, penny business. Trustee Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oops. Uh, I move that we approve the regular minute meetings of June twelfth, 2018.
Second.
Uh, there was a correction in there.
With correction.
There, uh, I believe, and I need to get this clarified, because the clerk wasn't here. I, I believe that, um, uh, Manager Williams' name was left out of the attendees at that last meeting, and I believe he was here, weren't you at the last village meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, just, uh, so with corrections.
Okay, so, uh, again, I move that we approve the regular, uh, regular meeting minutes of March, I mean, of June twelfth, 2018, with the necessary corrections. May I second?
Second.
A move by Trustee Ramsey, a second by Trustee Reyes, to approve accounts payable, I mean, to approve the regular meeting minutes for June twelfth, 2018, with the necessary corrections. Roll call, please. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Slaton?
Yes.
Osberry?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, Trustee Reyes.
I motion to approve accounts payable number nineteen dash zero four dated June twenty-sixth, 2018, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, fifty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second. A move by Trustee Reyes, a second by, uh, I forget, let's see your name, man. Trustee Moore, to approve accounts payable number, uh, nineteen oh four dated June twenty-sixth, 2018, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, fifty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Grant?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.[1693.13]